All right, we get a call to order for the May 22 voting meeting. Everyone rise your pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The board met an executive session on May 7th for the purpose of labor relations discussions in real estate. The board met an executive session on May 16th for the purpose of labor relations discussions in real estate. Recommend approval of the following meeting minutes as listed, April 24, 2018.
We have a roll call, please.
Dr. Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell.
Here.
Mr. Coulson.
Here.
Mr. Kolar.
Here.
Mrs. Rossler.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Schlock.
Here.
Mr. Wazniewski.
Here.
Mr. Zuko.
Here.
All members in attendance.
Thank you.
Recommend approval of the following meeting minutes as listed, April 24, 2018.
I'll make that motion, second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose, motion passes. All right, Mr. DeLuce is now with the Plum High School Chamber Choir, they're going to display their talents.
We'll be true to thee Plum High School ever and a day. Flats unfurled of plum and gold in a proud array. Oma mater, oma mater, glorious, grand and true. We will be forever faithful, hail, oh hail to you. You light up in the stars, you're the glow of a star's heart. Oh, see, see the shining star, you're the light from afar. Oh, and don't you forget, the only thing that matters is your heartbeat's going strong. Oh, don't you forget, nothing else can matter 'cause you know where I belong. Oh, take me there, won't you take me there, won't you take me home? Oh, take me there, won't you take me there, won't you take me home? We, we light up the sky, who knows what such things as goodbye. Oh, 'cause love, love can never die. Can never die. Forever, oh, you and I. Oh, don't you forget, the only thing that matters is your heartbeat's going strong. Oh, don't you forget, nothing else can matter 'cause we know where I belong. Oh, take me there, won't you take me there, won't you take me home? Oh, take me there, won't you take me there, won't you take me home? Oh, take me there, won't you take me there, won't you take me home? Oh, take me there, won't you take me there, won't you take me home?
Mr. DeLuce, thank you very much for sharing that wonderful talent with us. That's the best way you can start off a meeting.
Thank you. We have a concert tomorrow night at 7 o'clock, there's going to be them and three other groups performing at the high school auditorium. So, come on out, best free show in town tomorrow.
I know you were going to share some of the awards.
Yes, yeah, I did put a list of things that the music department has accomplished this year. It's been a pretty productive and successful year for us. First off, we've had multiple students from band choir and orchestra win spots by auditions in various PMEA ensembles, PMEA ensembles at the district, region, and state level this year. A very significant recent achievement, we received six Gene Kelly Awards nominations. Those were, the student-centered ones, were best ensemble, best stage crew, best all-student orchestra, and a best supporting actress, Ms. Liza Lobing, she's right here. So long. We're all anxiously awaiting those on Saturday night. For those of you that don't know, the Kelly Awards are kind of like the Tony Awards for high school musicals. Paxton, Benidorm, it's kind of a cross between a pep rally and the Tony Awards. And recently, we, the music department traveled to festivals of music in Williamsburg, Virginia, which we brought back many honors. Seven ensembles, spent all day Friday competing, really supporting each other, working with esteemed adjudicators, and they all offered fantastic performances. On Saturday, they got to spend the day at Busch Gardens, that's where the award ceremony was, and there were lots of smiles to be had there. Orchestras, bands, and choirs all received first-place positions, either superior or an excellent rating. So, we're extremely proud of our students' accomplishments, and we thank you for recognizing their accomplishments, and thank you for being a wonderful audience tonight. And hopefully, we'll see all of you tomorrow evening, thank you.
One last thing we're going to have you do, how many seniors do you have?
Seniors, raise your hands, I think we have 11 here tonight.
Quickly, can you tell us what your plans are for next year?
Okay, my name is Karen Opico, and I'll be going to Seton Hill University for a degree in secondary special education.
My name is Haley Deiken, and I will be going to Penn State studying psychology.
My name is Gabrielle Buckstein, I will be going to Penn State Baron to study early childhood education and special education.
Hi, my name is Victoria Leffчик, I will be attending Seton Hill University to study music therapy.
My name is Ryan Gallagher, and I will be attending Penn State Maine this summer to study communications.
Hi, my name is Julia Lawrence, I'll be attending the University of Pittsburgh to study pre-physical therapy.
Hi, my name is Nikki Shadle, I will be attending Penn State Maine for psychology.
I'm Colin Lewis, I'll be attending University of Pittsburgh to study biology.
I'm Megan Masili, I'll be attending St. Vincent College and studying criminology.
Hi, my name's Joshua Boland, I will be studying biology at St. Vincent's.
My name is Kayla Feldmeyer, and I will be attending the Indiana University of Pennsylvania to study elementary education.
Thank you.
All right, next is the student features, starting with the reach-out program, Mr. Sikolski and Lori Sankowitz.
They always make it too high. They're going to set, I'll begin. Where to begin? Two years ago, Mr. Fischel came and asked me to sponsor the reach-out club, and I said I needed to think it over. And two years later, I'm astounded by the results of saying yes. Just in the 2017-18 school year, this amazing group of 165-plus students has impacted the Plum community, school districts, their neighborhoods, and more so, right away. I thank all of you on the board and the past board for supporting us in the sponsorship, and more so, these remarkable young adults. Bracelet sales to promote community spirit, military connections to support our troops, through food collections, over 3,000 stocking stuff to send to the troops, and shipping this stuff at the Oakmont Post Office. Thanksgiving food drive, serving over 200 families with our sister chapter of serving other souls out of Franklin Regional. Easter egg hunt with over 700 people attending. Lollipop sales to donate to juvenile arthritis, Laura Hoover Foundation, Plum Food Pantry, Oakmont Methodist Church, and four local families that face catastrophes during the year. Five trips to McDonald House to serve families and give them a home-cooked meal, and bring smiles to the patients. We just finished construction of the Mustang Memorial Park at O Block, completely renovated, thanks to reach-out funds. Beal's Nursery, Thomasits and Dejonovic Landscaping, and Shot Stone Engraving. And I asked the community to please support those people because they supported us. We just put in a sensory garden constructed at Center Elementary for the students, for the handicapped students at Center. We covered actually all six senses, we even went beyond to the sixth sense. If you get a chance, please stop at Center's library and see the back right-hand corner, I'm sure you'll notice it. At this time, we would like Dr. Anderson to please stand up. The reach-out club would like to present to you a check as one of the people in charge of the hashtag #15, Ryan Harris Foundation. Reach-out tonight is presenting her with a $300 check from our lollipop sales at O Block Junior High School. These students have put in thoughtless hours of physical and mental stamina. They are never without a smile and never say never. This reach-out club is the inspiration behind our future. These are the leaders of tomorrow, learning how to lead, take initiative, complete tasks, and bring hundreds of smiles to so many strangers around the world. Many have seen or heard me say this, no act of kindness, no matter how small, is ever wasted. Reach-out has proven that to me. The pride that has been instilled in these students demonstrates the Mustang pride instilled in our community. There is no greater feeling than to do something for someone else, and ask for nothing in return, and know that your heart just grew an inch, and you brought a smile to someone you may never know or just met. Reach-out is a group of students led by two sponsors, myself and Lori Sankowitz, who unfortunately couldn't be here, her father suffered a heart attack last weekend, and he's just getting out of the hospital today. Lori's and myself, with the mission to learn leadership, mature, serve others, and bring as many smiles as we possibly can. To the Plum Borough community, I ask you to please encourage your next-year seventh graders to join us, the sixth graders of this year, and to the seventh-grade parents in that, the eighth graders, to either return to the club or bring friends of yours to join for the first time. And please support us as we may continue to support others and bring more smiles through either finding us on the GoFundMe page or any other way of contacting me. I'd like to close with this, please let me leave you with this. This past Friday was our final McDonald House trip for the year. We've gone there the last five months. The kids met a family with a one-week-old having heart surgery. And a three-year-old came to the dinner, we buy the food out of our own money. We prepare the food, we serve the food, we cook the food, and we clean up for these families who are staying at the McDonald House from around the world. We've met people from Africa, the Middle East, Buffalo, New York. Nothing against Buffalo. But we met a child that was a three-year-old that came to us in a wheelchair with a breathing tube. But what truly tells the meaning of reach-out is when one of your members, Michaelie Taylor, tells her friends and family that to give her toys in lieu of her birthday presents because she wants to bring the toys to McDonald House. She stood there as these kids came in, and she brought, and she gave them toys, and then if they had a brother or sister, she gave them toys for them as well. And this was what she wanted for her birthday. So, when we look at what reach-out stands for, it's when a message like that gets sent to an eighth grader, and it's all the giving. So, please help us, help others, reach-out hopes that the board will continue to support us, and I thank you for your support this year.
All right, next, student features is recognition for Big 56 All-Section softball head coach, Jim McGrath.
Okay, everyone, I'd like to say our new coach, Jim McGrath, he's been with us in softball for many, many years.
Many, many years.
And he's going to share with us the team successes this year against softball to some of our sorority and aldermen.
All right, if anybody doesn't really understand how fast pitch softball works, it takes a lot of dedication and hard work from a player. Because of the demands that they have, both defensively and offensively, our pitching bound is only 43 feet away from home plate with a pitcher throwing a 12-inch softball at 55 to 62 miles an hour. Most pitchers throw screwballs, curveballs, change-ups, rise balls, drop balls, and drop curveballs, so a batter never knows what kind of pitching is being thrown at her. Making it more difficult to hit a fast pitch softball than actually a baseball. Bases are only 60 feet apart, making it extremely difficult to steal a base without being thrown out by the catcher. Since the pitching rubber had been moved back from 40 feet to 43 feet a few years ago, more hits are reaching the outfield, and with only three outfielders to cover that much area, they need to be on their toes at all times. Our players love fast pitch softball because it's hard, and the hard makes the sport great, and that comes from a league of their own. Fast pitch softball is one of the fastest-growing women's sports throughout the country, and more and more, we are seeing televised D1 softball games all over the sports channels. Some of our players have aspirations of playing softball in college, and these girls, most of them, do have that aspiration. I want to say a special thanks to our coaching staff, Coach Philip DiLeonardo, Coach John Forsythe, our team manager, Chloe Fabio, the booster organization that keeps, does things for us that the school district just doesn't have the money for. Our athletic trainer, Chloe Weiss, athletic director Bob Alpino, and the assistant athletic director, Jeff Wolf. The team this year scored 117 runs with 111 singles, 26 doubles, six triples, and 10 home runs. And I'd just like to introduce our starting lineup for this year. Catcher Gabby Fashetti, who's a junior. First base Alyssa Schofield, who's a sophomore. Second base Fran Bigley, who's a freshman. Shortstop Mackenzie Lake, who's up here in front of us, she's a sophomore. Third base Jillian Durst, who's a freshman. Left field Olivia Wendell, who's a junior. Center field Sidney Young, who's a senior, who's up here as well. Right field Sidney Shanter, who is a junior. Our pitching staff included Abby Freilich, who's a junior. Melanie Minkie, who's a freshman, and Mackenzie Dericki, who's also a freshman. Now, the team leaders in batting average, Mackenzie Lake, who's naturally up here. Abby Freilich, Sidney Young, who's up here as well. Fran Bigley, and Gabby Fashetti, who's up here as well. Slugging percentage, Mackenzie Lake tops the list, Sidney Young, Gabby Fashetti, Lindsay Soprano, and Jillian Durst. On-base percentage, Mackenzie Lake, Sidney Young, Abby Freilich, Olivia Wendell, and Gabby Fashetti. As far as RBIs go, top of the list, Mackenzie Lake again, Sidney Young again, Fran Bigley, Gabby Fashetti again, Abby Freilich. Home run, our home run club includes Mackenzie Lake, Gabby Fashetti, Jillian Durst, and Lindsay Soprano. And now we're going to have the awards. Whipple coaches in our section, it's 5A, section 1. These are the two first-team winners selected by the coaches in our section, Gabby Fashetti. Mackenzie Lake also made first team. And Sidney Young, our senior, second team.
And if we, Mr. McGrath, if we could please have the seniors to say, introduce ourselves again, and let us know what they plan for the future.
As is tradition. Sidney, you need to come up?
I plan to go to Geneva College to study biomedical engineering and play softball.
I plan on going to St. Francis University to study chemistry.
I plan on going to Northwest Florida State College to study sports business management.
Thank you, Coach McGrath, and to all your staff.
Sue, is this, oh, these are awards?
Yes. I'd like to call up now our track and field head coach, Nick Odo. Thank you, Coach Odo, if you could just say a few words about the team, and then we have a certificate. Okay, thanks, Nick.
Hello, I'm here to introduce Hunter Linhardt, Hunter Linhardt is a junior. Currently, he's one of our throwers, he's our discus thrower that just took fourth at Whipple's last Thursday, and he actually earned himself a spot, we're leaving on this Thursday to go to States at Shippensburg. Hunter threw a throw of 146 feet, and how many inches was it? Eight, eight inches. So, we're really excited for him, and he's looking forward to it. This is his first trip to States, and hopefully, we'll have another one next year for him, but Hunter Linhardt.
Thank you to Coach Odo and to Hunter for coming out this evening. Now, we'd like to call up boys volleyball assistant coach, Maddie Gestrich, please.
Hi, I'm Maddie Gestrich. First, I want to start by just thanking the board for hiring me for this year. I know based on my age, it brought some skepticism to some people, but I appreciate you having the faith in me to handle the responsibility that came with the job of coaching the boys. Keith Londonberg is the head coach of the boys varsity team. I was the assistant, and I was the head coach of the junior varsity team. And based on the season, our record, it didn't necessarily show how hard the boys worked every day. We had practiced two and a half hours a day. So, our record didn't show the hard work that was put in, but they definitely, they worked harder than what it shows. Frank absolutely was one of our hardest workers, never gave any issues, always was who we turned to. Put so much pressure on you, sorry. But academically, strived through high school this past four years. He had a 4.67 GPA, he was a National Merit Scholar, and very clearly, a scholar athlete. That was just academically. Volleyball, if there were a million awards, he would get every single one of them, I'm telling you. He was our go-to for everything. So, thank you for always being who we turned to, sorry for all the pressure. But congratulations and good luck. He got the honorable mention for the Whipple AAA section.
I'd just like to say a quick thank you to my coaches, parents, and teammates for helping me achieve this award. And I am going to be attending the University of Pittsburgh next year to study mechanical engineering.
All right, next, is there any citizens' comments on agenda items?
John Anderson, 2258 Chaparral Drive. I'll be upfront and honest with all of you, I'm not here to rant and rave, I don't believe that's going to get us anywhere. I am here, though, looking for hopefully as much truth as we can get to the bottom of. I don't believe in making decisions based on internet fodder or what happens to be posted on the local websites, because some of that's true and some of it's not true. I would like to thank Dr. Yamninsky for replying to my email to help me get organized for this little talk. First of all, I understand that I don't blame any of you for the budget problems that we have. None of you were here 10 years ago when this started. Maybe you could say three years ago, it could have gotten eaten away at, but the problem where we're at right now is not due to the nine of you. When you run a budget and use up all of your reserve funds as a way to balance your budget, nobody can run a household that way, so I'm not sure how you can run a school district that way. I believed that then, I believe that now. So, a couple of questions I asked Dr. Yamninsky. Is the eighth grade civics class being cut? Her answer, yes, had a very reasonable reply, though, because the ninth grade civics class covers all standards and the eighth grade civics teacher is retiring. I think that's a sensible solution. That's something that should be told to people. How about the eighth grade computer class? Is it being cut? No, not technically, that's being put at seventh grade. Again, that's factual information that I think people want to know. The tragedy is, is that in Plum School District, you go K-8 with one computer class, one twelve-week computer class in two thousand and eighteen. I've seen kindergartners learn how to code, and I've seen second graders actually code, and in Plum, we're given a twelve-week course in computers in seventh grade. That doesn't sit well with me. And I know that several teachers in the high school ask students to use their iPads for ways that they necessarily haven't been trained in, and so those people have to spend time training the students rather than in the content area, in the area of using the computer. The language, yes, language in junior high will be cut down to a twelve-week exploratory course. As Dr. Yamninsky told me, somebody, I don't know if it was the administration or who, did some research, and realized that there was about ten kids a year actually taking a fifth year of language. I understand that, and on the forefront, that makes a lot of sense. However, when you peel back just a little bit more, I've seen personally that when a student doesn't take the first-year language in eighth grade, it limits what they're able to take down the line in high school. And I don't mean by eliminating their language, but there's only so many periods in the day. And so, if they're still having to take a second and a third-year language, which most universities, the research I've done, which wasn't every university in the world, but pretty much the local state ones and some out-of-state ones, required two, only one university required one, several required three, and if you have high hopes of going Ivy League, they need four. So, the problem is, is that we just had a wonderful display earlier today of the chamber chorus. What if those people had high dreams of going to college and they needed three or four years of language and couldn't fulfill that? I think that'd be a shame, because there's a lot of great things in Plum, such as that chamber chorus and the athletes that were just recognized. You take away those opportunities. So, I can live with maybe the four years of language, but I do think it needs to be considered at putting it at eighth grade so that you aren't hurting the students, because the job of a school board is to provide the education for the children of this school district. I understand that you cannot run a deficit. I get that. I understand numbers. I'm an educated person. I realize that there has to be some cuts in some places. I don't like it, but I can deal with that reality. But what I'm asking you is the father of a ninth grader and a sixth grader, to really consider what those cuts are going to be. Because as I've brought out to you, and again, I'm not saying I have all the information, because unless I've missed it somewhere, all the proposed cuts haven't been published somewhere. If they were, I apologize for missing that. But what seems to make sense on the front often does not make sense when you peel back the covers. And what you're going to do by this language change is that you're going to hurt all the other electives as well, like the TV people who are here. You don't get to make that choice, and there goes that elective. Plum is already woefully behind in the number of courses that it offers at the high school level compared to some other local districts. I just ask you, and again, I understand the financial constraints that you're in, but to please choose wisely what is cut versus what is not cut. Lastly, it has been rumored that through the years Plum has had to settle up on several special education court cases. Your five minutes is up. Are you almost finished? Almost, almost. Five minutes is up, though. Thank you. She offered me her five minutes. We don't do that. Can't do that. Just try to wind it up. Policy's been updated. And I'm on my last point, if you heard. The problem with that is some of the rumored cuts, and again, are with special education teachers. Taking people out of, with special education degrees who are highly specialized in that field, putting in other area people who might have a special education degree. I have an elementary degree, I'm certified to teach K-8. I currently teach fifth grade. If you put me in kindergarten, I would not nearly be as effective as I am at fifth grade. I'd like to think I'm pretty darn good at fifth grade. At kindergarten, mm-mm, no way. Please consider that as well, because Plum has already paid the price for not following their special education regulations correctly. Now, I'm afraid that you're at risk again, and that would lead to even more expenses having to go out the door to pay for mishaps. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name's Michelle Zanatelli. I live at ninety-three twenty Salzburg Road. I'm here, I have a couple of questions, and one of them has to do with the kindergarten, making a half-day. My daughter is the first graduating class of all-day kindergarten. I didn't like it, but you know what? They're excellent, excellent students. She was honored, they had the most honored people ever. Now, you're trying to give me a pill to say, that didn't work? Every day, I mean, every year, from kindergarten through sixth, they had a day off, because they had to meet, say, what are we doing with these kids? How are they doing? Where is that data that you have? I want to see that data so that I know that you guys are making the correct decision of going backwards to half-day kindergarten. My daughter, when she was in kindergarten, she was at that nurse's office almost weekly, heart attacks, sore throat, because she was bored. But as she continued to go through the, you know, the rest of the year, she started learning. She enjoyed it. She's living in Brooklyn right now, she graduated in two thousand and sixteen. She's living in Brooklyn in an apartment, going to Pace University. She learned a lot here, and I think what you're doing, unless I see your data that you collected from the time she started kindergarten in twenty-three, twenty-four till now, why you're going backwards? My other point is libraries. Plum, I don't know what the heck is wrong with you people and your libraries. I've been fighting since twenty-eight about your libraries. First, I had to fight with Mr. Faschel. I had to fight with him because my daughter filled out this quiz or test with the librarian, and she came home with a fourth-grade reading level. She was with Mrs. Rogers in sixth grade, reading six-point-six-whatever, six-point-oh reading grade. But you know why she told me? Mom, they gave me this test. I took it, didn't feel like it, I marked all, one row, and now I had to get books from just this part of the library. I was ticked off. I'm a reader. Don't tell me my kid can't get a book anywhere in your library. That's a crock. So then, she goes to the high school, oh yes, the lovely high school, okay? She comes to me, Mom, I have to print this out, I have, we have no ink. I said, tomorrow morning, go to the library, print it out. She's like, I can't, library's closed. Take a day off work, go up to the high school, the accreditation people were coming. Oh, Mrs. Zanatelli, let's get you in this room here, meet with this assistant principal. Why? Because accreditation people were coming, and the whole calendar said, library's closed. What kind of high school closes their libraries? We're paying a lady? I said, you're paying somebody? But the library's closed. Not open because they have to be there when school starts, not afterwards because it's detention. Well, you know what? I was fighting with the board, not you people, I was fighting with the board then. I get very aggravated with, I get a bee in my bonnet when I have to come up here and fight. I have no more children in this district. I have a nurse, I have a kid living in Brooklyn, and I have a kid graduating. But you know what? I have neighbors, I have friends, I have CCD students, I have Girl Scouts, I've done everything in this community. I worry about these kids coming up. I hope you guys make a wise decision and do something here. My son has Special Ed with learning support with Mrs. Swayzak. Love her, she's wonderful, and I saw her name on the list. She's a great support teacher, we need support. He needed support. I knew he needed support in kindergarten. I had him in summer reading school from kindergarten all the way up, because he needed it, I knew it. So, I hope you guys make some really good decisions, we need learning support, we've got to fix our libraries, and we need all-day kindergarten. I mean, if you want to see a class where everyone did great, look at Class 2016. Thank you.
Amy Wetmore, eight-three-four Unity Center Road. The information I'm about to share comes from the minutes that are available online under the school board link on the district website. If you go into the archives, I pulled this information from the June meeting, beginning with the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven year, because that's all the further back you can get in the archives. But I wanted to give everyone a little bit of history on what the vote for our budget has looked like. So, in June of two thousand and eleven, Board members Kalella, Daddell, Drake, Matthews, McGuff, McGurk, McMasters, White unanimously approved a budget with an anticipated revenue of fifty-three million, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and anticipated expenditures of fifty-three million, five hundred and six thousand dollars, with a difference of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars to come from the district's fund balance and no increase in millage. June two thousand and twelve, they approved a budget with, I'm going to skip the amounts of expenditure and revenue and just get to the difference in light of my five minutes. There was a difference of one million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars to come from the district's fund balance with no increase in the millage rate with a split vote. Those voting yes were Kalella, Daddell, Drake, McMasters, and Zuko. Noes were McGuff, Tomorello, and White, and absent was Saint Legere, and I apologize if I ruin anybody's name. June two thousand and thirteen, the budget is approved with a difference of nine hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars coming from the district's budgetary reserve. That motion passed with yeses by Kalella, Daddell, Drake, Saint Legere, Tomorello, and Zuko, and noes by McGuff, McMasters, and White. Two thousand and fourteen, the budget is approved with a contingency that we take five hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars from budgetary reserve, and we include a post-war bond contribution of seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, or I'm sorry, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, and we terminate an agreement with Kelly Services. That motion passed with yeses by Gallagher, McGuff, Stepnick, Tomorello, and White, noes from Kalella, Daddell, Saint Legere, and Zuko. I will note here that there was a first vote taken to raise millage by point-five-four mils, and that was voted down by Gallagher, McGuff, Stepnick, Tomorello, and White, and then they approved the budget. June two thousand and fifteen, the budget was approved with a shortfall of one million, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars to come from the district's post-war capital reserve and budgetary reserve fund. That passed with yeses from Kalella, Daddell, McGuff, Saint Legere, White, and Zuko, noes from Gallagher and Stepnick. June of two thousand and sixteen, we passed the budget with a difference of six hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars, which was the first surplus that came in our favor. That was passed with yeses from Kalella, Daddell, Gallagher, Roger, Stepnick, and Zuko, noes came from Codwell, Rossler, Schlock. In two thousand and seventeen, the board approved a budget with anticipated revenue and anticipated expenditures being equal, and the millage rate was set at twenty-point-two-four-three. That was passed with yeses from Daddell, Gallagher, Hickman, Roger, Stepnick, and Zuko, and noes from Codwell, Rossler, and Schlock. Of note, there, we, to cover a lack of revenue in the years of two thousand and eleven and two thousand and sixteen, borrowed from our fund balance two million, nine hundred thousand dollars over the course of three years. We took one million, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars from post-war bonds and the budgetary reserve in one year, and one million, nine hundred, forty thousand, seventy-six dollars from the district's post-war capital reserve and budgetary reserve fund in two thousand and fifteen. That equals six million, one hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars pulled from other sources to cover expenditures, and taxes were not raised in that time period. Fiscal responsibility is a two-sided coin. You have to increase revenue while keeping expenditures to a minimum. The boards that came before you did not effectively generate the revenue necessary, and in most cases, they went even further and used what reserves there were available. To not increase...
Did you say five minutes to try to wrap it up?
Okay. To increase millage for a decade and tap into rainy day funds is mismanagement. Every expert has told you, we need to raise our taxes. And if you listen to the names that I read, you can hear that people did change their minds along the way. They looked at the historical data and realized that maybe they needed to do something differently. And I want to take this moment and I'll wrap it up, but I want to commend Ms. Rossler for publicly stating at the discussion meeting that despite sticking to her guns previously, she sees that we must raise taxes in order to right the ship. So, don't go down in history as somebody who pulled the district down. Do the right thing.
Adam Hill, forty-one-hundred New Texas Road. The vote you are about to make tonight will determine not the future of this district, but if this district has a future. This vote will be a message to your constituents on if you volunteered to run for this position you were elected to, to provide our children with a safe, engaging learning environment while developing creative problem solvers, critical thinkers, and globally competitive citizens, as it states in the Plum School Board Mission Statement, or if you volunteered for this position for your own selfish political and/or career gains. Mr. Schlock does not feel we need to raise revenue since it was done the past two years. What is amazing, even though taxes were raised the past two years, Plum Borough School District is still below the average millage rate for Allegheny County, which is over twenty-one. Our current millage rate is twenty-point-two-four-three, which is two thousand, twenty-four dollars a year, or a hundred and sixty-eight dollars a month on a hundred thousand dollar home. With the proposed increase, it will take it to twenty-one point oh-seven-five-seven, which is twenty-one hundred, seven dollars a year, or a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month on a one hundred thousand dollar home. This is a difference of eighty-three dollars a year, or seven dollars a month on a one hundred thousand dollar home. This increase will put us in line with the average millage rate for Allegheny County. According to Realtor.com, one out of five home buyers said they would pay six to ten percent above their budget for the right school, and one out of ten would double that to twenty percent. Public schools once had a monopoly on education, but this is no longer the case. Parents have many options to educate our children. The fact is, cutting teachers and slashing programs will cause potential home buyers to take their money elsewhere, and current Plum homeowners to move to districts that put education first. Without an increase in revenue, we'll be facing even more drastic cuts to teachers and programs. If this district fails to remain competitive, no longer will potential buyers want to pay six to twenty percent more for a home in Plum. In fact, they'll pay six to twenty percent less. Your one hundred thousand dollar home will now be worth potentially at most ninety-four thousand to as low as eighty thousand dollars. When home values drop, this district will receive less money. If this district will receive less money as a result of decreased property value, the board will have no choice but to raise taxes to absurd levels, and programs will need to be slashed dramatically. Penn Hills is facing this very same crisis and have a millage rate north of twenty-seven, but also have one of the highest amount of students attending charter schools in the area with close to eight hundred students, of which the district is responsible for paying. You'd be fooling yourself to think this could not possibly happen in Plum. Look at your current budget and remove six percent from your revenue and compound that year over year. That is what we could face. On the contrary, look at a six percent increase in revenue could do for the budget and the school if we were to maintain a school that family's desire. For your constituents, compare the potential revenue increase with a potential decrease in home value. The proposed revenue increase is only four percent, but by not increasing revenue, will damage our district and our housing market, potentially losing at least six percent of their property values. Yes, this will be... have one of the highest amount of students attending charter schools in the area with close to 800 students, of which the district is responsible for paying. You'd be fooling yourself to think this could not possibly happen to Plum. Look at your current budget and remove 6% from your revenue and compound that year over year. That is what we could face. On the contrary, look at a 6% increase in revenue could do for the budget and the school if we were to maintain a school that family's desire. For your constituents, compare the potential revenue increase with a potential decrease in home value. The proposed revenue increase is only 4%, but by not increasing revenue will damage our district and our housing market, potentially losing at least 6% of their property values. Yes, this will be the third year the Board has voted to raise taxes, but due to the fact that our taxes remained stagnant for so many years prior, this increase will put us where we should have been if the Board voted to make very small increments over the years, but instead voted no. This placed our district in the financial crisis we are in today. Mr. Schlock says this tax increase is not needed, stating it was raised above the index the past two years, and we can do more with this budget. Has history not taught you anything? Mr. Schlock, you're either Prince Ali with a genie and a lamp and three wishes, or you want to cut programs so drastically that it'll force parents to send our children to charter schools or move to other districts, reducing our district to one-room schoolhouse like Little House on the Prairie. To correct your statement, it was only raised above the index last year, and as I stated earlier, this district is still below the average millage rate for Allegheny County. Every expert the School Board has brought in says we need to increase revenue. Even Ms. Caldwell spoke to how close we were to being put on the state watch list because of the financial situation we are in. She went as far as misrepresenting our State Representative, Tony Luluka, whom she quoted him saying, "We are close to being put on the watch list," even though Tony Luluka denied saying that. Ms. Caldwell, you put your credibility on the line by those statements to prove our school is in a financial crisis. You made a presentation at previous meeting with a long list of schools, about 10 pages long, showing our district in the top 10 schools with the largest budget deficit. This is one time I agree with you in that we do not want to be on the top of that list. Cutting into this deficit is a two-step process. Step one, make strategic cuts throughout the district. Step two, quickly inject new additional revenue into this district. Agree with the cuts or not, we have already completed step one, but this will not work without step two. It appears Ms. Caldwell and Mr. Schlock think we can balance this budget by cutting out, as Ms. Caldwell stated, cookies and donuts. I do believe the entire budget should be looked at and the strategic budget cuts made before cuts to teachers and programs, but cuts to cookies and donuts do not get us out of this crisis alone. To put it in perspective, I did some math...
I've got about five minutes to try to wrap it up.
I'm wrapping up. The cost of a dozen donuts is about $10. To cut our $5,000,000 deficit, we would need to cut 500,000 dozen donuts from our budget over the course of the year, 2,778 donuts a day. Ms. Caldwell also wants to cut $25,000 activity bus, saying she was able to pick her kids up from school activities because the bus got home so late. That is because...that is great for you, Ms. Caldwell, and I'm happy you had the option, but you're extremely out of touch with what is going on outside the world you live in. This is example of a non-strategic cut. What if you're a single parent working one or more jobs, or have a family of two working parents, or parents that work shifts, or parents that rely on public transportation, or parents with multiple children in multiple schools doing multiple activities spread throughout our very large district, or a child that possesses great athletic, music, and/or art abilities that depend on these buses to be able to participate in these activities, which may even result in college scholarships, or a child that depends on these buses to do 10 activities so they feel what it is like to be part of a team, to be part of something that makes them feel special, and to be part of something positive. I have one last thing. Lastly, prior to the last election, Mr. Schlock made a statement criticizing Board members in their terms for making a vote on the center addition. Mr. Schlock stated prior to the vote for the center addition, and I quote, "There are a lot of lame duck Board members on this Board now that are approving this, what do you have it?" "This that do not have any idea on how they'll come up with the money they were going to waste next year on the construction, and so any waiting their vote should not count." Ironically, the construction cost, $2 million, is about the same as the proposed tax increase you'll generate. Mr. Schlock, since you have other political aspirations to be state-run, making a potential lame duck, will you heed your own advice when you make your vote for this revenue increase based off of the dire financial situation Ms. Caldwell presented us to? If you vote no to this increased revenue as a potential lame duck on this Board, you'll leave this Board with no idea on how to come up with the money you're going to waste next year.
Hello, my name is Alexis Byalata, 516 Stone Edge Court. I'm here to advocate for the AP Language Program. Half of my presentation is gonna be in Spanish, so I hope you know how to speak Spanish. Para empezar, quiero decir un par de cosas sobre este programa de español. Soy una estudiante en la Universidad de Pittsburgh. Mi major es neurociencia y mi minor es español. Sin este programa, mi nivel de este idioma no sería tan alto y yo no completaría, completaría mi minor en la universidad y yo no podría ir a España para mi study abroad porque no tendría la experiencia y la educación. He travesiyo de parte de los hispanos hablantes en Pittsburgh para ayudarlos cuando necesitan ir o ver un médico. Eso yo no podría hacer sin la clase de español a fe. Desafortunadamente, ustedes estarán quitando la oportunidad a tomar esta clase de estudiantes jóvenes. Es una lástima. ¿Qué escuela? Esta escuela está dispuesto a tirar una cosa muy importante a aprender y también una habilidad de vida. Ahora les presentaré mi discurso a ustedes en inglés por los que no lo entienden probablemente debido a la educación insuficiente que recibieron cuando estuvieron en la escuela secundaria. What that last part said was, "Now I will present my speech to you in English. For those of you who do not understand, probably due to the fact that you didn't have a sufficient education in Spanish." To start, I want to say a couple things about this program. I'm a student at Pitt, and my major is neuroscience, and my minor is Spanish. So without this program, I actually probably wouldn't have even been able to do minor. And I'm actually going to Spain tomorrow to study abroad and finish my minor because I have too many classes for my neuroscience major. And without this program, I wouldn't have any kind of language experience or education. So I also have translated for Hispanic speakers in the Birmingham Clinic in Southside so that they can see doctors when they need to because they don't actually speak English. So without all of these things, I think it's important to keep in mind that even though there's only a couple people, my class had 10 in AP Spanish or French or whatever class you're taking, I think it's important to keep this program. So...
Hi, Michelle Gallagher, 7 Heather Court. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for clarifying some of those items that I did ask the Board two months ago about the civics class and the computer class. It went...no one gave an answer, no one told us. There was somebody on social media, and you don't know if it's fact or fiction, that they did state exactly what you stated this evening. So I do want to thank you because the transparency has been not so good. So, yes, I was on the Board, and I did raise taxes twice in my four years. The first year, I did not. The second year, I did. We went two years without tax raises. And by the third year, and I had mentioned this before, bipartisanship, it started to work, and people started to get the bigger picture of fiscal responsibility and with this community and what we were going to be dealing with over the next six years. We voted for that tax increase in 2015...no, 2016, and then again, we did it in 2017. Nobody likes to raise taxes, and I've said this before, having senior citizens in this community, my parents and many relatives that live here, we don't like doing that. But the bigger picture was to understand what we were doing for a community, and that includes our senior citizens. They want to live in the community where you're, you know, where younger families are moving in as well, and that people are selling houses next to them, and it's a young family next to them. That's the bigger picture, our families, and educating our families in our school district. Because as someone had stated earlier, you know, when you look at buying a home, the number-one thing of buying a home in a community is the school district. You keep cutting away at the school district, what do you have? Nobody wants to move here anymore. So when you look at what you've been doing already this year, half-day kindergarten, physical education, you've already brought it down to the bare minimum. There are students at that high school, and I don't know if some of you know, because I do have two high school students, that, you know, they're a little bit devastated that they're not taking a strength and conditioning course. You know, there are things that you are cutting back that you don't realize are affecting students because they don't come here and talk to you about it. History, bringing it down to the bare minimum, or at least trying to. We're looking at, again, I said the half-day kindergarten. I cannot, you know, when I think about that, I think of all three of my children going full day, and how would they benefit? And, you know, I look at some of the kindergarten teachers in the room today, and I get very emotional about it as well, because I don't think it's fair. 28 furloughs, not replacing eight retirees. Librarians. You know, if you keep your libraries open or you think that you're gonna have the libraries open in the schools to have someone go in and take an online course, don't you need a certified librarian to be in that class? Have you done the research? Is that true? Have you done that research? And someone had mentioned something on, you know, one of those other social media sites that, you know, in our state prisons, they have libraries. Our prisoners in the state of Pennsylvania, state of Pennsylvania have the opportunity to go to a library in prison. Okay. So that being said as well, we've done physical education, life skills, library, foreign language, ROTC, history, you know, those are business education. Those are all items that are all not being talked about, but are in your slides, in your slide presentations. And what are you going to do? You have to let the parents know what you are doing. Transparency. You know, my son wants to be one of those AP Spanish students. You've already cut back what his honors requirement is for...he's had his hardest year, his sophomore year. Hardest year, sophomore year, and he plans to go in AP Foreign Language in Spanish. What are you gonna do? He might be one of 10, but there might be one of 10 in ROTC. How do you pick? Why do you keep pinning each program against each other? Why do you do that? They are all important. Every student matters in this school district, and every educator in this room matters. And with that being said, I know there are some retirees that I would like to acknowledge. I would like to acknowledge Mrs. Howard. She was my son's kindergarten teacher and my other son's first-grade teacher. She is one of the most compassionate, loving teachers I've ever met, and she's the most appreciative. I also want to mention Mr. Bryce Carper. He was my teacher, and he is my son's...both of my sons' civics teachers in the junior high, and my older son said he taught like a college course and got him ready. I would also like to say, we've had the honor of having Porter Drum this year. I've heard wonderful things about her, and I'm so pleased that my oldest son got to have her as a teacher. And Mr. Mike Evans, both of my boys had him. So I just want to give a shout-out to those retirees. Thank you.
I have a couple of pages that I could talk about, about all the cuts that are going on, but everybody already said that, and everybody seems to be running out of time. So I'm gonna focus on what you're doing to the eighth grade. Again, we heard that you cut the civics. We heard that you cut pretty much the computers, and now we know that you cut first-year language. That means that these children will not have the opportunity to take an AP Language course. I was told by the principal at the high school that that's okay. Maybe they could double up. So maybe they take Spanish 2 and Spanish 3 at the exact same time. We know that that's not possible, so we're not really thinking ahead. I also know that in lieu of these academic courses, you're now giving my kids a study hall. Maybe that wasn't mentioned earlier. Instead of academic courses, instead of a language course, instead of staying on par with the surrounding districts, including North Allegheny or Pine Richland, where our new administration is from, you're giving my students a study hall. My kids are advanced students who want to take five years of a language, and I don't care that there's only 10 in an AP course, because what you're not considering is the fact that to get to that Level 5 Language course, they had to put in a lot of work and effort, and thus, the numbers will be smaller. If there aren't any prerequisites for certain AP courses, of course, those numbers will be bigger, but you gotta look at the bigger picture and see what the value of the course is. What benefit will it have to the students? I stand up here and beg you not to take this language course away from our eighth graders. They need this course. As the first gentleman said, it also opens up other opportunities for them in the high school. They can get...if they don't want to continue with language, they can take other courses. Their schedule opens up in other ways. So that's really all I want to say. I don't have much to say, but I just want to say, don't give my kids a study hall because you've laid off so many teachers that you don't even have enough teachers to fill the schedule. I want a language course for my eighth-grade students. Thank you.
Chul Nutter, 173 Conny Out Drive. I spoke in January. I'm gonna repeat a little bit of what I said then because I feel like it needs repeated. There's a lot more people here because there's not a snowstorm today. Somebody who was up here just a couple people ago said, "Nobody wants to raise taxes." My question is, why? Why? We went 10 years without it. Every year, food costs increase, gas prices increase, people's salaries increase, your maintenance salaries increase. Everything increases. That's forward progress. Right now, we're moving so far backwards. I said in January, "I chose Plum." I repeated it over and over again. I could have chosen Moon, where the taxes are a little bit lower. I could have chosen Cranberry, where the taxes are lower. I moved here knowing the taxes were high. I never expected them to stay the same. Never. I chose Plum because it did have all-day kindergarten, and my husband and I both work full-time. Now I have a child going into third grade and a two-year-old who's gonna have less opportunities than his sister did when he comes up into your half-day kindergarten program, who's gonna be shuffled around instead of having stability and instead of developing those social skills that are so important that I repeated the studies in January of what they show. And I will repeat it again. We have a median home value of $152,000 here in Plum. We have an unemployment rate of only 3.6%. We can afford a tax increase, and to those people who say they are on a fixed income, so am I. I work for a company. I am not guaranteed a raise every year. I make the same amount, every paycheck, 26 pays a year, and at any moment, I could lose that job, as anybody in this room can, as 28 teachers just found out. Nobody has guaranteed their income. People can make cutbacks. People can have their own fiscal responsibility and financial responsibility to make the cuts they need in their own household to afford to live in a good community. Period.
I live at 117 Winchester Drive. So I'm here to talk about special education. My son is in first grade at Center Elementary. He's completely blind. He has epilepsy. He has plenty of diagnoses, but that's not the point. The point is that he's reading Braille, and he's doing that because of Ms. Green, who's I'm sure is here tonight. No one expected my son to ever be able to read, and he is because of the capable teachers and the caring teachers that we have here. These are also extremely skilled teachers. Now, we all heard about the Reach Out Program and the wonderful things they do at the Ron McDonald House. The fact is, those children, they live in the community. They leave that hospital, and they come out here. They live among you. They are children like my son. So he doesn't need...I mean, he loves toys, that's great, but he also needs an education. You can't forget about the children with special needs. They must be educated. It's working. He's thriving. He's developing because of the extremely wonderful teachers you have. And that's because, you know, they have their masters, they're extremely skilled. This is what they do every day. It's not a teacher who just so happens to have an education degree, you know, special education, maybe they taught it 10 years ago. These are passionate teachers, and that's what our children deserve, and I will happily...you can raise my taxes, please. If I'm gonna pay money, let it be for things like this. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Highland, I was fortunate to participate in a meeting with you earlier this spring. It was PTA Presidents and Dr. Highland and we had a nice opportunity to discuss with you the direction of the district and to get to know you a little bit. And I was there not because I am a current PTA president, but I was intended to be the next PTA president at Center. But the day before this meeting, found out my children are being moved to Pivick next year. So, but that's okay. It was still a good, it was a good opportunity to learn and discuss. And a couple of the things you said, you said you had really hoped that, your intention was to make Plum the jewel school district of the East, which I think is great, which I think everybody in this room would love to see. And I would hope that the rest of the school board would be behind that too. And, and so my concern is, you know, since then, we've furloughed teachers and we're talking about cutting languages and electives and cutting libraries and librarians. And those things, you know, somehow we have to stop this downward spiral because none of that is going to make this the jewel school district of the eastern suburbs. So, like the other people that have been up here, you know, please consider these cuts and consider these teachers and consider these students. I mean, if we, somehow we have to stop this downward spiral that I feel like we're in. And you had also asked, you had asked each of us if there was anything that was disappointing about the school district. And I had said, you know, one thing for my family in particular is the shuffling that has been done of elementary school students. My children started out at the old Holiday Park. And then we were moved to Center, which was a little bit of a rough transition, but you know, we love Center and we're very happy to be there. But then we found out we're being moved to Pivick. So another transition. So for my current third grader, next year will be her third elementary school. And we haven't moved houses. So we'll deal with it because our neighborhood is dealing with it and other neighborhoods are dealing with it. But it is disappointing and, and I said, you know, I'm concerned about my son who is in kindergarten now and will be going into first grade. Will he get to stay at Pivick through fourth grade? Or is there a chance he will be shuffled again in a couple years and then he will have to transition again? And your response was that it would be great if we had to redistrict again because people are moving into the district and we have to adjust the schools again for the numbers. So, I agree, that would be great if people are moving into the district and we have to redistrict again because Plum is so great that people are coming and we have to find room for people. But I don't see that happening in the near future with all of the cuts that are being discussed and the furloughs and the increased class sizes that are inevitable with all of these furloughs, which is a great concern as well. So, please, I hope all of you share the goal of making Plum better. Please raise taxes, increase revenue, keep our teachers, keep our programs. Please, let's, let's stop this spiral and make Plum better. Thank you.
Will Brenner, 396 Holiday Park Drive. Apparently, I'm supposed to give my address as the first thing. See, y'all know where I live, which is fine with me, of course. So, I didn't really write anything, just going off the cuff here. I have a son who's in first grade now. He was the last full-day kindergarten at Holiday Park Elementary, now moving to Pivick. But I'm not gonna hear, stand here and complain about, about school moves. I'm not gonna stand here and complain about taxes. I'm a finance guy, I work for a bank, I deal with that all day, I don't wanna talk about it in my off-hours. I went to school, the University of Pittsburgh, I earned a degree in English writing. Libraries are why I'm here today. Libraries and librarians, very important. We can't learn without them. I take that back. We can't learn effectively without them. Students can't engage material effectively on their own without the resources to do so. We live in a culture of look it up, Google it, instant satisfaction. I've got everything that I need to know about all the knowledge in the world on my phone. You lose, you use it to look at pictures of cats. You use it to comment on Facebook posts about disagreements on dollar signs. I use it to write poetry. So I'm gonna read you something that I wrote in response to something I learned under self-study when I was in elementary school. It's a poem by William Carlos Williams. "I have eaten the plums that were in the icebox and which you were probably saving for breakfast. Forgive me, they were delicious, so sweet and so cold." Bet you didn't think this was gonna turn into a poetry reading. I rewrote it. So hopefully, it's, it's something that can give people who are entertaining these decisions some inspiration. "We have taken the books that were in the library and which you were probably using and saving to learn. Forgive us, they took up space, so expensive. Oh, the savings." So I look at this one of two ways when it comes to education funding and having grown up in the Philadelphia School District where I saw class sizes jump from 25 children to 40 children in the span of my tenure from first grade to sixth grade, when they announced that they would then take the K-6 school and turn it into a K-7 school my next year and a K-8 school the following year and redistrict and send people to the broken-down middle school for six, seven, and eight that nobody wanted to go to with the rumors of the abusive teacher. And then the selection of, you know, Philadelphia high schools that were failing only to be sold to corporations. So I've seen it, I know how it happens and we're starting that cycle, which I truly hope we don't go down. Glorious, grand, and true, you can gloriously and grandly take all of the books and tell them the truth about it. Or you can do something truly glorious, grand, and true, and you can fund your libraries and you can pay your librarians and you can invest in people's future by giving them the knowledge that they need so they can self-discover and become the leaders that we want them to in this world. Books!
Robin Tonjol, 222 Blossom Court. I really wasn't going to speak tonight, I wanted to be here for support, but everything that I've been hearing tonight comes back to one thing for me and it's discrimination against the gifted student and the high-achieving student. And that is something very close to my heart. I'm a former educator. My two children are in the gifted program. I've made it a full-time job to make sure that Plum is compliant and doing the things that are necessary for the children in our district that have a GIEP. When I hear certain board members say that they'd like to cut AP courses and make them cyber, that's upsetting. I don't want a cyber school. I want my district. I want a live teacher because those are the teachers that are going to do the most for my students and for all of these students. We are not here to take cyber courses. Secondly, when you say there's only 10 students in that course, would you ever say that if it was a learning support course or something else? You can't say that. And you can't say it about the gifted education program either. These kids also have IEPs, they have GIEPs. In my children's GIEPs, it is stated that the librarian must give them appropriate materials for their grade level, their grade level that far exceeds where they're at. When my daughter was in second grade, she had an eighth-grade reading level and she was to be provided the things that she needed from the librarian. By the time she was in fourth grade, she was a 12th-grade ninth-month reading level and the librarian worked side-by-side with me to make sure she was given along with her classroom teachers and along with the gifted teacher. This is very important and it will be a legal issue if you discriminate against the gifted student. Please be careful in what you're trying to cut. We want to keep our district competitive. We wanna keep this district a place where people flock to because of our high expectations. Please listen to all of us here. Thank you.
Gina Dessel, 606 Pikeview Drive. I am one of the furloughed special ed teachers. I taught, I started the life skills program at the high school. I love what I do. I don't wanna teach anything else but special ed. These kids have a place in my heart. We bust our butt every day. Some of you have come and you've seen, we've served you. We're out in the community. These kids are getting jobs. They're working for your borough. It takes a special person to do what I do. Not saying that anybody else couldn't do it, but there are people that are scared. They don't wanna do what I do. They don't. Please consider and think about what you're doing.
All right, up next is the President's Report. There's a lot of positives going on in the school district here at Plum. Two new recent hires have started from their previous job, they've started at Plum here. Our new facilities director, Jim McClellan, he started this past week. He brings 18 years of outstanding experience in facilities, operations, and construction. Our new K-8 Assistant Superintendent, Rick Walsh, comes from an excellent, excellent, high-performing school district in Pine Richland. He started recently as well. Ninety seniors graduating this year with high honor status, a GPA of 3.75 or higher. They received, they earned awards a couple weeks ago at the high school. There was an academic awards night at O'Blockt Junior High coming up from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 30th. A new proposed student survey is gonna, for fourth graders, six, eighth, and 12th graders. Each of those age groups will, which will help better track student progress and climate all the way from K to 12. That's being proposed to the board, which should be approved. Next year, for the 1819 school year, the board is going to be starting up a student's school board representative, which will help give more representation and a voice to the students. They will be able to, they will be able to participate in the committee and discussion meetings, but not the voting meetings. June 7th is the scheduled date coming up for the Plum Senior High graduation ceremony. So I hope everyone is able to attend. And then the next televised voting meeting will be next, next month, Tuesday, June 26th, which will be the same date the board will pass an actual final budget for 1819. Having said that, I will hand it off to Dr. Highland for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Schlock. I would like to give, give a brief overview of the budget process that the administration has engaged in to get us where we are today. Over the past month and a half, the administration has done our level best to grapple with a budget that has put us in the position of trying to maintain a quality educational program. And while at the same time, balancing a budget that is woefully short of the necessary resources to make this district the best it can be. The issues that we are currently facing are a byproduct of decisions that have taken place over several years, both locally and at the state level. Based on those circumstances, we are left with options, regardless of the route we choose, that people are going to be upset at varying levels of degree. And maybe even to a greater extent, depending on what perspectives, philosophies, and political beliefs they hold. My job, as I see it, is to recommend to the board a budget that I believe will position this district for future success. And that is what I intend to do. On one side of the argument, we have individuals that would never agree to any change in our staffing levels, even though they have been presented with credible information that clearly indicates there is no possible way we could meet our legal obligation to balance the budget, even if we pass the maximum tax increase, without making additional cuts and expenditures. To be clear, a tax increase to the maximum level will not get us to a balanced budget. Seventy-two percent of the budget is made up of salaries and benefits. And if we are to make any type of dent in this inherited financial problem, the only way to do it is with a decrease in our staffing levels. The other non-personnel-related expenditures, such as supplies, cost-control measures, budget reductions, and et cetera, they've been captured. Although we have received a limited number of emails with suggestions about other cost-saving ideas and ways of cutting the budget, we haven't had anything suggested that would alleviate the $5 million deficit. Other than people suggesting how they would cut other programs that they have no personal affiliation to. To those folks who are against the furloughs, I would share with you, I too am beyond saddened and disappointed that we must let some fabulous, fabulous educators go. This is the last thing that I wish to do. However, there is a misperception that the administration can pick and choose who we must part with. We cannot. We don't have a choice in the matter and we must base our decision entirely on seniority per the contract. The board has been willing to discuss a memorandum of understanding with the Teachers Association to the current contract in the hope of enticing more folks who may be ready to retire, but the offer was rejected because there was not a linkage to a new contract. This prerequisite requirement negates the potential of saving at least some of those being furloughed. I hope you would trust that as the new superintendent, furloughing is the absolute last move that I wish to make. Please know that my administrative team and I respect your opinions and we value your input because it is heartfelt and it is core to your beliefs. And I add to the kids' beliefs. On the other side, there are those who say that any tax increase is a bad increase. With the amount of excess that has taken place in this district over the past several years, your feelings may not be far from the truth and you certainly have a right to feel the way that you do. However, based on the administration's recommendation for this year's budget, the administration respectfully disagrees and believes that an increase in taxes is best for the district and we further believe that it's a necessary strategy if we are going to put this district on a path to financial stability. There are always additional cuts that can be made in lieu of a tax increase. The question is, at what cost? More cuts would certainly get our financial ledger in a better place. But the proposed solution can't be so debilitating that we do more harm than good and lose any opportunity to be considered a premier district. If our goal is to make this district one of the best in the eastern part of the city, and then Allegheny County, and then the state, we must remain a comprehensive school district with a comprehensive programs that people are proud of and find reason to educate their children here. Having inadequate revenue to fund this, excuse me, to fund the district and its programs properly will never allow us to reach the goal for which I was hired. With that being said, the administrative team does respect all of your opinions and we do value your input because they are heartfelt and it is core to your beliefs. The administrative team will continue to recommend what we believe is in the best interest in the district, in both the short term and the long term. We are following the path identified by the Pennsylvania Business Administrators Organization, which clearly detailed a proposed path to stability. To those who are against the budget cuts, we will strive to find ways to make our schools the best they can be and we will get stronger and our goal is to improve student achievement levels. We will strive to make you proud of this district's commitment to educating our students and making them college and career-ready. To those who are against the tax increases, we will continue to look for inefficiencies and cost-cutting measures to make us stronger but leaner. We will also keep constantly in our minds that we must be good stewards of the community's money and will do our very best to value every dollar that they give us. Whatever the determination is of this proposed final budget, we all must come together- we all must come together and work side by side to do everything within our ability to provide the best education possible for the students of this community. Thank you, Mr. Schlock.
Thank you, Dr. Highland.
Personnel Committee, Mr. Colar, Chairperson. Recommend the approval of Maello Brongo Maello to serve as the district's labor attorney and chief negotiator for the teacher collective bargaining process.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval, recommend the approval of resolution number two thousand eighteen dash five dash twenty-two dash two to eliminate the coordinator of student services position.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval to accept the following retirements, numbers one through two, as listed from below.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval to change the employment status of Tyler Van Ryan from bus aide to substitute bus aide, retroactive to April twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, and amend the retirement date of Doug Fraser, as approved on April twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, from May fourth, two thousand eighteen to June first, two thousand eighteen.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval to hire the following, numbers one through six, as listed below.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval to accept the following list of fall two thousand eighteen volunteer coaches as listed below.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of the following leaves, numbers one through three, as listed below.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. As, give me your report, Mr. Colar. Education Committee, Dr. Anderson, Chairperson. Recommend approval of special education section of the comprehensive plan.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of resol, of resolution to close Regency Elementary.
On behalf of committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of contract with Western PA School for Blind Children Outreach Program.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of the adjusted open house schedules for two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of the first annual student survey for grades four, six, eighth, and twelve.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
A motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of the following grants, numbers one through thirteen, as listed below.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion is second, is there any discussion?
Um, I just would like to add them up for us. I know we haven't done a chart online so far, but just so everybody knows, that's over thirty thousand dollars in grants that we're approving for this month.
Is there a motion in second? Uh, motion in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Um, education report, Dr. Anderson.
Dr. Highland, I just had a question. Is there a chance that you could, I know there's lots of questions that we are, um, closing libraries. Can you, can we offer a clarification that we are not closing libraries?
At the high, at the high school level, there will remain a librarian in, uh, every period of every day. Um, at the junior high in Holiday Park, uh, we will have a librarian that will go between both schools, and they will push into, uh, classes, and they will have to be somewhat more creative than they have been in the past, but students will still have access to the library. At the other two elementaries, the same thing will be true as well. So we will have access to a librarian, and the high school will have a librarian full-time.
And books will be available to students?
They will.
Absolutely, okay. Thank you. We can't take questions right now. I can talk to you about it afterwards.
Uh, Safe Schools Committee, Mrs. Rossler, Chairperson.
I actually don't have a report this evening, but I asked Dr. Highland to speak on the assessment that we had recently, and also Joe Fischel, Mr. Fischel, if you could speak on that presentation that students received.
You first, Jill.
Oblock Junior High was lucky enough to take advantage this year of a grant, uh, through the Elks, the local chapter of the Elks, to bring in a nationally recognized speaker. On May ninth, Mr. Ray Lozano came into Oblock and spoke to our seventh and eighth graders about the dangers of using drugs, alcohol, and vaping. Uh, Mr. Lozano made us laugh. He made us think, and he challenged the students to live a life that was, thank you, to live a life that was drug and alcohol-free. Uh, one of the most powerful things he did was he asked the students, what, what makes you special? What do you love? If you, if you're special when it comes to sports and you love sports, raise your hand. If you love the arts, and that's what makes you special, raise your hand. He went through a list of things, and he told the students, he said, "That's what drugs and alcohol will take away from you first. Those are the things that it will rob you of." Mr. Lozano was an outstanding speaker. Through the support of Dr. Highland, my intention is to continue to take advantage of the Elks program and bring in these nationally recognized speakers. Thank you.
He's a tough act to follow. I should have won first. With the, um, first of all, our thoughts and prayers go out to those folks in Santa Fe, Texas. How ironic, we're talking about safety and, uh, and we think we have problems, but those people down there have significantly greater problems. With regard to, um, our assessment, uh, we had an assessor from outside of the district come and spend almost, well, came in Sunday night and stayed all the way until Friday, and had the opportunity to visit every single one of the schools on multiple occasions, and spoke to the entire administrative team, including the central administrative team, and, um, I think also did the bus garage as well, if I'm not mistaken, and did a comprehensive review of our policies, our procedures, checked all the doors, and went through our, um, policies, watched student, uh, drop-off pickup procedures. Uh, it was, uh, an extremely thorough, um, overview of our district. The hope is, and, um, I'm pretty sure that we are going to get a report that's going to be very comprehensive in nature. And the report, and I actually spoke with a gentleman tonight to find out the progress of the report. He has the report, almost three fifths completed, three of the schools, um, that he visited, or three of the five schools are done. And, uh, he is ready to share those reports, uh, with the board, and he would be willing to do, uh, a presentation, have a PowerPoint, and do something virtually, because he lives in Virginia. Uh, but he would be happy to entertain the board's questions and any concerns that they have, and they will, and he will be giving us recommendations, and he does have recommendations for us based on what he has encountered thus far. So as soon as that report is done, we will share that with the board. We will use the summer to take those recommendations and do the very best we can to prepare our schools for our kids when they come back, so that they are even safer next year than they were this year.
I appreciate that, Dr. Highland. And I, I just wanted to reach out to the community and just, you know, you look at Santa Fe, ten people, um, was killed there, and they had two SROs right there in their school. Um, so us, as a school district and a school board, I believe everybody up here, you know, we want to look at all options for safety, um, working with, um, the council, the police department, the staff, um, the parents, just to try to keep this school as safe as we can, everything from possibly having, um, our own school police to, um, also having SROs in our school in addition to that. So it's, there's a lot of conversation that we're going to be having. We're gonna, um, read that report thoroughly. The public will know, um, the results of the report based on what they can know, without any safety issues, divulging any safety issues. So, you know, just know that we are working on that. Our hearts go out to, to all the students that, you know, were part of that tragedy and even saw that tragedy. I mean, it's so hard to watch. So our goal is to have it never happen here, but can we say it will never happen here? I think we're past that in any school in America. So as a board, I think we, um, we take it very seriously, and we're gonna move forward and look at it in some, you know, different options. So, thank you.
Eastern Area Schools, Dr. Anderson, Representative.
Uh, we have our monthly meeting this Thursday, so nothing to report.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Coulson.
Uh, no report this month.
Finance Committee, Mr. Schlock, Chairperson. Recommend, recommend adopting and making available for public inspection notice of the two thousand eighteen nineteen proposed final general fund budget with anticipated revenues of sixty-three million, two hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and expenditures totaling sixty-four million, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy, seventy-six, with a use of fund balance and the amount of one million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
The motion is second, is there any discussion?
Is this option three?
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
Yep, can I clarify just, Steve, to make sure, because we're not clicking it, but, um, or the people can't click into that. It is inclusive of the furloughs that were already implemented or given. It is inclusive of the retirees that already happened. It includes raising taxes to the maximum level.
Above the index, yeah.
Above the index, and it will still, we will still have to borrow one point four plus million dollars.
Correct.
Almost one point five million dollars. That's the current budget that we're voting on.
That was, that was the fund balance, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it reiterates in looking at that, just what Dr. Highland was saying. I mean, I think we are doing our best to make the best of a really frustrating situation, and, you know, being in dire straits, and so I recognize, and I think you said it well in saying that there are vying interests sitting out here, there's vying interests sitting up here, we all have it. Um, but at the end of the day, we are talking about cuts retirees, raising taxes, and trying to increase revenue, and still having to borrow money. So I think it is, you know, laid in front of us, and it is tough. I'm, I don't think that it's an easy decision, but I think it's one that, um, has been spelled out pretty clearly.
Can we please clarify that, Mr. Zohorcheck? We are not borrowing money.
I'm sorry, we are borrowing it, we are using borrowed money.
We're using borrowed money.
We are using our, yes, I'm sorry, we are using.
To clarify.
Yeah, we are using our borrowed money that is in the fund balance.
Correct, yes.
My apologies, Sue.
Motion is second, is there any discussion?
I still have discussion. Joan, I just have a couple of questions for you, um, and I wrote them down, and I'm not gonna rehash. I, I had, you know, people come up here and speak, and, you know, there's different things that happen in this district, and eventually you just have to put it behind you and say, "You can say what you want, but I just want to move forward." But one of the things, um, that I'm concerned about is just sustainability of a budget. And, you know, I've been on the board for the last two years. I won't look back, but I will tell you, sustainability for this school district, for the students, for the community is extremely important, especially when you're gonna raise taxes. So my question to you is, do you believe this budget's sustainable? The, the direction we're headed?
I do, I definitely do. I mean, we were looking at annual deficits of five million dollars a year and, and increasing by half a million dollars every year, just based on increases to Peasars and healthcare. This is significant di, uh, difference in our financial projection. Uh, we closed the four million dollars, about four million dollars from, from a deficit of over five million dollars. This is, these are not one-time things. These are, these are things that are gonna occur year after year after year after year. The impact of, of, um, reductions in, in one-time expenses did not occur this year. The, the influx of one-time revenues did not occur. These things are gonna occur year after year after year after year. So it changes our traject, trajectory. Um, instead of having to try to close five million plus every year, you know, looking at next year's budget, we're, we're gonna need to close a million dollars. Um, so it, it definitely makes us a more sustainable, give us a longer-term outlook, and that's been recognized, Standard and Poor's, we had a phone conference with them, and, and they recognized us for, for the actions, and, uh, they understand that the actions are not easy, but, but I, I have a feeling that it's gonna ref, be reflected in our, in our bond rating.
Which went, which went down, and we wanted to give up.
We'd like it to go up so that we can have, um, the ability to borrow money, um, down the road, a long time down the road, but it'll give us that option again to do so, and a better interest rate.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? No. Roll call.
Mr. Colar?
Nope.
Mrs. Rossler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
You know, before I say anything, I just want to say, a great man that I admired immensely and loved deeply two thousand years ago said he can't serve two masters. When I ran for the board, I ran as Republican. When I was elected, my allegiance went to the school in general and the students in particular. I want to do my best to push the best possible education for our students, so that they, they can become, as Matthew Kelly states, the best versions of themselves. Option three, which is what we're gonna vote for here, provides that. I vote yes for option three.
Mr. Schlock?
No.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Of course.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell?
No.
Mr. Coulson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Rec, recommend approval of the senior citizens rebate program, applying a five percent senior discount for the school district's real estate taxes. The process and qualifications will match Allegheny County's existing Act Seventy-seven process. If the taxpayer is not paid by the end of the face period, the five percent discount does not apply to penalty. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion?
I really appreciate us adding this in. That's all I would say.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of termination of contract with ABM. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of capitalized interest for September bond payment from Fund Thirty-five to Fund Ten in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and five hundred and seventy dollars. On behalf of the committee, on behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of capitalized interest for March bond payment from Fund Thirty-five to Fund Ten in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of the treasurer's report and bill payments. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of the GOB report for May two thousand eighteen. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that, all that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of the budget transfers for May two thousand eighteen. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval to accept the lowest bids from Arthur J. Gallagher to bind, to bind insurance for the 2018-19 school year as attached, insurance renewal. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. I don't really have anything as far as a report other than we, this is passing the preliminary final budget, but the actual final, final budget we have to pass on the next voting meeting on June 26th, so. Athletics, Mrs. Caldwell?
Recommend approval of the following overnight.
Recommend approval of the following overnight conference request for plum varsity and JV cheerleading to Slippery Rock College on June 18th through the 21st.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Do you have any report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Schlock. Just briefly, our baseball team's record is currently sixteen and four and they have advanced, they have advanced to the corner finals of the WPAAL baseball tournament and they are scheduled to play today, weather pending, so I don't have an update. We've been in exec session since before six, so hopefully if they were able to play.
They lost.
They lost.
Lost.
Congratulations on a good season. Thanks for the information. Girls lacrosse team finished with a record of nine and six and qualified for the WPAAL tournament for the first time in school history. So congratulations to girls lacrosse. Unfortunately, they did lose to Quaker Valley in the first round. Girls track team finished with a dual meet record of four and two. Fall sports team registration is now open on the family ID link of the PBSD athletic website for all parents. And in addition, fall physical dates are June 11th for football and cheering and June 18th and 19th for all other sports. Please access the family ID site for times and locations. And the athletic department offered an NCAA recruiting webinar on May 20th and another one will be scheduled for June 10th. Highly informational for student athletes seeking opportunities at the post-high school level and this is hosted by national recruiting expert Rick Wire from Dynamite Sports. That's it, Mr. Schlock, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Caldwell. Forbes Road CTC, Mr. Rogers representative. Recommend approval of the 2018-19 operating and administrative budget for the Forbes Career and Technology Center for the 2018-19 school year.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
A motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Do you have a report?
I do not have a report. We meet on Thursday.
Okay, thanks. Intergovernmental committee, Ms. Rossler, chairperson?
We did not meet, we will meet next month.
Legislative policy council, Mrs. Caldwell?
Just an update on a few pieces of legislation. The House passed House Bill 1527, which would amend the Child Protective Services Law to require mandated reporters to report any act of child abuse they witness, whether or not it is while they are in their employment or outside of their employment. So this is now passed on to the Senate. This, of course, would include all of our employees. Those of us who work in healthcare will be required to report any suspected child abuse, even if it happened when you were at your workday. So we'll wait to see what happens with that in the Senate. House Bill 564, which would require school entities to administer to students in grade seven to twelve a locally developed assessment of United States history, government and civics. A prior version of this legislation would have required a condition of high school graduation with a score of at least sixty percent on the civics test to be administered to prospective US, same as administered to prospective citizens by the US Citizenship and Immigration Service. This is now before the State Senate Education Committee. In addition, the House passed House Bill 638, which would, among other things, prohibit candidates from crossfiling in elections for school board and this is now headed to the Senate State Government Committee. Senate Transportation Committee approved Senate Bill 1098, which would allow school bus operators to use school bus armed cameras to record violations of the law that prohibits drivers from passing a school bus while stopped. In addition, wow, many pages of legislature. And that's it, that's a wrap-up. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Caldwell. Policy committee, Mr. Wazniewski, chairperson. Recommend approval of the following policies, policies 005 and 006.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Hang on, did, did all the board get the updates that were made today?
They did.
Everyone is, is, is okay with the updates?
They did.
Thank you, just wanted to make sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Brian, do you have a report?
Just real clear, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Highland and the current administration for working with me and the policy committee, moving this, these policies forward. It's going to streamline things for us as a board and make it a lot more inclusive for all of us as we move forward. And, you know, just really digging into policy, where we're at here as a board and with all the changes that are going on, updating these policies 005 and 006. As a member of this board, I am making the motion right now that we realign this board and we reorganize.
I'll second that.
Motion in second, or any discussion?
Can you clarify?
This is administrative in nature, this is not something that citizens can comment on. This is an item before the board.
Right, so my understanding of reading policy, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we as a board are allowed to realign once a year and it can happen at any voting meeting or actually any publicly advertised meeting, is that correct?
You can re, reorganize every meeting, twice a meeting, every month, anytime you want.
So to be very clear, what I'm saying is I'm asking the board here, I made a motion, we have a motion and it's been seconded. My motion is stating that we reorganize, reorganize this board and I'm stalking specifically president, vice president on down. With that being said, I make the nomination, I make the nomination that Andrew Anderson, Dr. Anderson, take over the presidency of this board.
Can you please repeat that, we couldn't hear.
I'm making the nomination for Dr. Anderson to take over as president of this board. There's a motion, needs a second.
I make a motion to table it?
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose?
How can we table it?
No.
Wait, wait, let's, let's do this. He's made a motion to table, there was a second. Now, there, I think that what you should do is do a roll call. I don't know that you can just do it, you just can't say it passed. I would suggest you do a roll call because it's a critical vote.
Roll call on the table vote, Mr. Dice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rossler?
If you want to table this, you would vote yes.
Are we voting to table?
We're voting to table.
Voting to table comes first. If it succeeds, then it's tabled. If it fails, then you're back to the original motion that Brian's made.
Mrs. Rossler?
If I, if I vote no to table this, then I can vote no, yeah, correct?
Yes, that's correct. If you voted no to table it, that would mean that, that it would not be tabled and when the table, when the motion comes up that Brian's made to.
You can vote no again.
Put Ms. Anderson in, she could, you could vote no then too.
If you vote no, if you want to vote.
Okay, I'm going to, go ahead, comment here.
Mrs. Rossler?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
All right, let me understand this.
If I vote no, tell me again. If you vote yes to table, then Brian's motion would, would be put off. If you vote no on the table, you would then be going back to Brian's motion to reorganize and put Ms. Anderson in.
Thank you, no.
Mr. Schlock?
Yes, to table.
Mr. Wazniewski?
No.
Mr. Zuko?
No.
Dr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Kohler? Motion fails.
Okay, now the ta, now the motion that Brian has made to put Ms. Anderson in as chairman or as president is on the table to be voted on.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Schlock?
No.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson, I'm sorry, Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell?
No.
Mr. Coulson?
No.
Mr. Kohler?
No.
Mrs. Rossler?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Now you have the position of vice president.
Well, can we?
We don't have a president.
Can I clarify that I'd like to make another nomination for president?
Sure.
Okay, so I would like to nominate Brian Wazniewski for president.
Want to do a roll call?
No, if there's no second, there's no second.
I'll second that.
Here we go, who's second is?
Me, I'm next.
Tired of being in the dark. Okay. Let me be very clear.
Okay. Mr. Schlock?
No.
Mr. Wazniewski?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Yes.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell?
No.
Mr. Coulson?
No.
Mr. Kohler?
No.
Mrs. Rossler?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
All right, Transportation Committee, Mr. Zuko, chairperson. Recommend approval of the use of five buses on June 22nd, June 23rd to transport visitors from Amplify Church for Summer Fest 2018, formerly known as the Plum Community Festival.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Mr. Zuko, Transportation, any report?
Just a quick report that I hope we never gave the impression that our aging bus fleet was not safe. Scott Mergan does an excellent job keeping those buses running and safe and they inspect them, I think, twice a year, plus once with the state police. And our mechanics do a very thorough job, but with fifteen or sixteen buses that are, you know, fifteen or sixteen years old, he's not a miracle worker, so that was always my concern that the, if we, if you had fifteen cars in your own household and that were over fifteen years old, the odds of one of them, you know, failing or breaking down at any given time increases and that's what we want to try to avoid, so I hope I didn't give the impression that those buses were not safe. That's all I got.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, is there any citizens' comments on non-adjourn items?
Tracy Riggins, 435 Allegheny Avenue. I'm sure some of you have missed me so much, I had to take a break. This message is to the board president. You literally had teachers up here crying. You were staring out at what was a full room of mostly teachers and your president's report started with the sentence, and I'm paraphrasing, about newly created hired positions. Are you kidding me? It's called bury the lead. Dig that in there a little bit deeper. How can you sit there and stare at these people and start your report with that? You have parents begging you not to furlough these teachers and you're talking about these newly created, high-paying positions. It is called human decency, Steve, human decency. And all I can say is good luck in November because I'm sure the only two votes, your parents, that you have in this room will get you very far.
Amy Wetmore, 834 Unity Center Road. I would like to address the decision to use Bay Area Risk Consulting to complete the safety assessment for our district. First, I'm in no way opposed to using an outside firm to complete the safety assessment. As having it done sooner rather than later is always best. However, I, like many, am frustrated at the board's lack of transparency on the company selected and the affiliation with board director, Mr. Kohler. I've read the solicitor's statements to the press in regards to no existing conflict of interest, but the board's own policy reads, no employee or board member may participate in selection, award or administration of a contract supported by a federal award if he or she has a real or apparent conflict of interest. That's from your own policy manual, Operations Section 800, Number 827, Conflict of Interest. To say there's not an apparent conflict of interest is failing to see the situation from the perspective of parents and community. Given the price tag that accompanied the use of Bay Area Risk Consulting for a service that the Pennsylvania State Police were willing to provide for free, there should have been more discretion in how the information was shared with us. As Mr. Kohler is listed as an associate on the website, the appearance is that he is a subcontractor and by policy, that means there should have been prior public notice, public disclosure of all proposals considered and contracts awarded, his abstaining from the vote prior to it being taken and publicly announcing and disclosing the nature of his interests as public record in a written statement to be attached to those board minutes. Even if there was only the appearance of a conflict of interest, why not err on the side of caution? The motion passed unanimously and abstaining would not have changed the outcome. We have been asked to trust the board and work with you to ensure a stronger future, but trust is earned. In situations such as this, I encourage each of you to consider how it may be perceived by us and proceed from that point.
Michelle Stepnick, 3020 Settlers Court. I'm going to touch on something tonight that I think I've emailed at various points and that Dr. Highland touched on a little bit, and that's the teacher's contract. And for those of you I sat on the board with, you know full well that we tried to, the teachers themselves came to us with an option to try to, yes, negotiate an early contract, but in addition, work on an early retirement program that maybe would have saved some of these jobs that we're sitting here looking at and red. And I would ask you to, there's still time to fix that. Go back and revisit, really be willing to look and see what kind of compromises. And when I came on to the board, the contract expired that first year and that was pretty tough. They worked bell-to-bell, did nothing extra and we have a lot of changes coming. I'd be a little concerned about that and rightfully so, quite honestly, but they kept, we kept going back and forth with ideas. We didn't use words like, this is the final offer. We, we used words of, okay, where do we go now? What's the next compromise? We had goals. For this current contract that you all should be negotiating, there was additional board goals that the board was trying to achieve that would benefit the school district. And I think the teachers themselves had goals to benefit the school district as well. So I would ask all of you to do your due diligence, ask questions about what's going on in those negotiations and then in addition, I would also be asking, what can we do to fix this by July 1st? Thank you.
All right, the June meeting schedule, discussion meeting will be Wednesday, June 13th and the voting meeting will be next June 26, 2018. And before we adjourn, Dr. Highland, I want to say a few words about the students and the TV production group.
Oftentimes, when you go to plays, the kids that are.
Oftentimes, when you go to plays, the kids that are, do all the stage work, don't necessarily get any credit. So all those kids that are working on the TV portion of this meeting tonight, if you could come forward, Luke Foster, Will Marzina, Garrick Poe. Put the camera on someone else, not me, as you're coming up here. Ashley Freeland. I want you to do one thing. I want you to wave into the camera so you can get a little love. All right, any seniors here?
Yeah.
All right, can you, can you share where you're going? What you're doing? Guys, it's 10 o'clock, they can hear you.
You have to turn it on.
He's video, not audio.
I'm Luke Foster, and I'm going to be attending Allegheny College up in Meadville and I'm going to be majoring in biology.
I'm Ashley Freeland, I'm going to be, going to I U P with a major in Business Management and a minor in Communications.
And I'm Will Marzina, I'm going to Slippery Rock University, majoring in Supply Chain Management and minoring in Communications.
Let's give all these guys and girls a collective round of applause.
Having said that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.